School committee will hear public comments in person virtually when we have our open session for that. These are also broadcast over the Burlington Cable Access and recordings are being made. The access code to get into tonight's meeting is two, three, four, 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 seven, five, one, four, two. And just to see if people are paying attention this week. Thank you, Bob and Mr. Kuna. The password is not Tuesday. It is lowercase y, four, lowercase r, capital X, z, lowercase m, uppercase M, lowercase j, four, I can't remember any, a V and a five, I believe. Okay, good. So let's stand up and do the pledge of allegiance. So first, what I'd like to do is I'd like to have a moment of silence for the two tragic events which have taken place since our last meetings. The one, the shooting in Buffalo, and the shooting of the elementary school students and the teachers in Texas. Thank you. So first on the agenda is the approval of the minutes for four, twenty-six, twenty-two. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Thank you, as always, Ms. Downey.
And all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? And so it's three, zero, zero. We have two people absent this evening, as you can't tell. One's on vacation and one is under the weather. Okay. Next is public participation. As I mentioned earlier, you can dial in and access through WebEx. I've already given the dial-in information. This is a friendly reminder that comments are limited to three minutes. And first of all, I'd like to see if there's anybody in the audience who would like to participate or come up and speak? Is someone online? No one in the audience? Oh, yep, coming up. Please introduce yourself.
Hi, I'm Elena Lattis. I'm a senior at Burlington High School. Me and a couple other seniors from the Italian program came to talk about why we think the middle school should continue the Italian program. We just think it's a very integral part of our high school experience. And we know that if you don't take it at the middle school, you're unlikely to change languages once you get to the high school. And the Italian program has been a super big part of our community here. The high school and the middle school have always pushed community building. But Italian has been such a big part of my community. It's the place where I feel that I truly belong at the school. And I feel that if you remove that, it's just really breaking apart our sense of like place here. And I just think that's not right. And I feel that you're taking away a big opportunity for students to feel they belong at the school and find people who are like-minded, friends. I just, I think it's taking away a big part of the school experience here in Burlington. The teachers are amazing at the high school. I know that they're incredible. They make me feel like I really belong here. And I think that if you don't continue the program at the middle school, they're likely to leave. And I feel like it's really tragic because I think a lot of students should really experience that student-teacher bond that you can get here at the Italian program. I think that's kind of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I appreciate your making that speech. And anyone else like to come up? Please announce your name too, please.
So, my name is Paul Conti. I'm also a senior here at Burlington. And I just wanted to not only second what Elena said about the Italian program and all its benefits, but also highlight a little bit of what we do after Italian. Since we have such a great program, I personally am continuing in Italian. Next year, I'll be at Bowdoin, double majoring in neuroscience and Italian. I will be continuing study like many of our Italian students do. We have a very large post-secondary continuation with Italian, larger than many other languages, many other things. And I think it would be a huge disservice to our community to do away with one of the biggest strengths of our high school and middle school, which is having four languages, which is something that other towns can't boast about. And then, just to emphasize how impressive our Italian program is, recently I had an interview with a man from the Italian consulate in Boston who interviewed me about my Italian experience at Burlington High School and also at, in the future. And at the end of the interview, he made a point to tell me how impressive our program was here, how much of an impact it had on, how much of a visible impact it had on our students, and how it was one of the more notable ones in our region. And I just wanted to echo that a little bit louder because I think it's an integral part of my high school experience. And I've never appreciated an academic program as much as I have the Italian program. It has a huge impact on my academic growth, but also my personal growth.
Thank you, thank you for sure. Anyone else like to come up? Please state your name too, please.
My name is Brooke Bass. I'm also a senior at Burlington High School. I did my internship this year at Memorial Elementary School. And a lot of, when the middle school came, the kids, obviously, like they were asking me a bunch of questions about the middle school, and especially about languages because it had come to like the time of year where like they were picking their language and Italian was still an option on there. And I'd say like about like a third of the fifth graders at Memorial were like, oh my God, I want to take Italian. Like I'm so excited for it. I'm Italian, like my parents are Italian, like I want like, I want to like learn about like the culture and like where my family's from. And like, I think that was like a big part of why I took Italian because both of my sisters took it and then my cousins took it and their cousins took it. So it's been like a whole entire like family web of people taking Italian. And I met some of my like absolute best friends taking the class and just, it's been like really exciting like learning about the language. And in the middle school, I really felt that like it like made my middle school experience better. And it was just, it was nice to have that. And I think it, again, would like do a disservice like the kids and the community to take Italian away, especially because like there are so many like Italian-Americans that love learning about the language. And like for me also in college, when I'm a junior, we have like the option to study abroad. And I'm definitely going to study abroad in Italy to like broaden my Italian experience.
Thank you, thank you for your comments. Would anyone else like to come up from the audience? All right. Thank you very much. Anyone online who'd like to comment, make comments?
Yeah, so there is one hand up on WebEx, Nikki Cadillac.
Ah, okay. Ms. Cadillac?
Hi, sorry, I had to move rooms. One second.
We can't hear you.
Amy, can you hear me now?
We still can't hear you.
No, it's probably on me. Let me play for me.
All right, okay. Hold on one moment, we think it's on our end. Exchange student coming in the fall staying with us, so I will have to...
Ms. Cadillac, thank you for your patience while we try and fix this.
Nikki, can you try talking now?
About now?
One more time, no, we're good.
Did you try and try to...
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes. Wonderful. Thank you.
I just wanted to apologize, first of all, I can't be there. Clearly, you can probably tell, I'm feeling under the weather today myself. Thanks for letting me speak. For the record, my name's Nikki Cadillac and the mother of two Fox Hill students, as well as a two-year-old son. I'm also the daughter of two immune-compromised parents, one of whom is currently undergoing chemotherapy. I'm here tonight to request the district implement a common sense COVID mitigation policy in accordance with CDC guidelines in classrooms where one or more cases of COVID have been identified. Prior to the mask mandate being lifted, classroom spread of COVID-19 was virtually unheard of and cases within the schools were very low, even during a very high surge. When the committee voted to rescind the mask mandate, parents with concerns were told that our kids could wear masks if they wanted protection. However, in the last several weeks, it has become clear that not only are there more cases in our schools than ever before, but the virus is spreading through classrooms, including infecting students who are already voluntarily masking at school. So despite following all the recommendations to keep ourselves and our families safe for the last two years, because there are no mitigation protocols in place at school, these kids are bringing the virus home to their families, to their unvaccinated siblings, to their immune-compromised family members, and to single parents, in some cases, who have to pray they don't get sick so they can take care of their sick kids. And then in addition to illness, this is also costing families hours of work from having quarantine, for having to miss work to care for loved ones. There's also costs associated with having to forego activities that have already been paid for, canceling trips. And then, what had been stated before was that, you know, what we really want to have is uninterrupted instruction for our students. And that sort of goes out the window when teachers and students have to miss a week or more of school because they either got COVID or have been in close contact or have a family member with it. We live in a community and as such, we're responsible for each other. I think it's reasonable to ask our community members to take common sense measures to protect each other and the wider community. The CDC recommends that individuals who are vaccinated, who come in close contact with an individual with COVID-19, wear a mask, wear around others for 10 days. So what I would like to do tonight is urge the committee to establish this rule in a classroom where one or more case has been identified. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Ms. Malick.
Anyone else have any other comments in the audience or online? Okay. So we'll move to the next agenda item. And Dr. Conti, information reports?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm not sure if there's any subcommittee reports, having just gotten through town meeting. I'm not sure if Mr. Riggs is on the call.
Mr. Riggs, are you available or on the call?
I am present.
Do you...
I think I picked a interest from me today.
Thank you. Brooke?
Is Brooke on?
Yes.
Where are you? Oh, there you are. Yay, she's here.
All right. I haven't been up here in a while. But basically, all that's been going on in the school, so the freshmen, sophomore, and juniors just had their class elections. So the junior election results will be out tomorrow. So all of the new student councils are being set. And they had the new exec board elections also. So the freshmen are planning a fundraiser at Schoolhouse Ice Cream, which is something different that no class has ever done before. The sophomores are planning their semi-formal dance, which hasn't happened in two years. So they're also really excited about that. And that's on June 10th. And then they also are doing a flatbread fundraiser. And then the juniors put their deposit down for Danversport for next year for their prom. And at the end of June, they're also doing a flatbread fundraiser with raffle baskets. And then they also possibly want to plan a field day for the underclassmen, so like the juniors, sophomores, and freshmen, like the seniors do. And then as far as seniors, we had prom two weeks ago, which was a huge success. And everyone had a lot of fun at it. And it was just really exciting to have like a community bonding, class-wide event that we haven't had in a really long time. And then on Thursday night, we have our senior field night because that is the night before the seniors' last day of school. Well, besides, we have a few days next week, but that's for senior sign-out. And then all of our senior favors have come in and we got cups. So we're getting white and red cups for our senior favors. And yeah, it's just the last few days for the seniors. So everyone's really excited and ready for the move on to college. And everyone's excited for next year, too.
Thank you for the report and congratulations.
Thank you.
All right.
So thank you, Madam Chair. As you may be able to tell, I am quickly losing my voice. So what I just would like to do is, I'd like to read the equity statement that we start our meetings with. And then I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Larkin and Mr. Porch to run the agenda. So they probably won't be able to keep me quiet for too long, but I promise I will try. And you'll get the pleasure of not listening to me tonight. So again, the Burlington Public Schools Equity Statement. Educational equity means that every child belongs and receives whatever support he, she, they need to develop his, her, their full academic, emotional, and social potential to learn and thrive every day. This begins with kindness and valuing the humanity of every child or individual. So thank you. So with that, Madam Chair, again, Mr. Larkin and Mr. Porch, thank you for helping me out.
So the first item is DEI, and it's informational. And which one of you would like to speak?
So we have, thank you, Madam Chair. We have four of our high school students that are members of the DEI Student Advisory Committee, which is formulated new this year in Burlington. And there are 10 members total, with various scheduled things that we have some pretty strong representation here tonight. Christian, Shafali, Ava, and Kezza are all on, online. And I'm gonna, I'm gonna pass it over. We'll start with Christian. So Christian, if you could unmute yourself and, you know, go ahead and give a report.
All right. So is there like, is there anything specific that you would like me to say, Mr. Porch?
Nope, you just go ahead and share.
And you share what you feel comfortable sharing about your experiences and what your hopes are for the work.
Of course. All right. So my experiences with, so I am in both DEI and advocacy room. And so far, it's been great. And I made a lot of connections with new people and worked with people I've already known before and just grown stronger relationships. And I really enjoyed all of the work that we've done recently. We have, DEI has gone to the middle school to talk to the eighth grade English classes and kind of, kind of get a sense and have a discussion with them about what's going on with them and like issues that have rose to attention recently. And we've also kind of given them education and our insight on things. So that was a great opportunity and chance for the high schoolers. And I think that, based off of some of that work that we've done, like traveling to the middle school and knowing what goes on in our school and like things that happen and the bathrooms that we've heard about, it's just, it's really kind of, it shocked me to see like how much there needs to be done in our community. You know, our mission statement says that we are, we strive to be like lifelong learners in an increasingly diverse society. I remember it being among those words. And it just, based on what's been going on, it just does not seem like that has been happening. And we're not living up to that mission statement, I believe. And that kind of thing is, is not okay because it's, it's been providing false hope for a lot of people. And I feel like a lot of the hurt that different people in different communities have been going through has gone unrecognized or unnoticed. And if it is noticed, people say, oh, that's not good. But then nothing is really done about it. No one actually takes fast and effective action to get done what needs to be done. And that's what just really, it kind of upsets me. But I also wanted to talk about some of the points that we have brought up in DEI in our last meeting, saying that, and this is with our school, we talked about, one thing we talked about is that the school and clubs get funding by the school for different things. And a problem that I and another DEI member, Martha, have recognized is how an African-American club, which is a club at the high school, we, it's been the club leaders that have been paying for all of the snacks and bringing their own games from home and kind of putting their money and their personal property, bringing that to the table for the, for the school, when we heard that the clubs are actually supposed to be getting funded. So for that, for that not happening for that club, it just kind of says something. And like the recognition needs to be there. And then another thing that has affected mine, along with other students' experiences, is the lack of diversity in the administration, especially with teachers. At our, at our school, here at BHS, we, of course, we know like we don't see black teachers or, and there, there is a guidance counselor, like Ms. Knight, of course. And then we have Mr. Porch as well. But we, there's a lot of, there's a lot more diversity in the students than there is in the administration. And we feel like there are some voices that aren't being heard and that we don't have the, we don't have the people that we can go to or the guidance counselors may not understand what some of, some of the students go through, which is a problem. And it just causes uncomfort among the students. And that is something that I just wanted to bring up as well. And even another thing that I, sorry, even another thing that has come up with me is that, as some, some people know, that I have like recited a poem for Black History Month that has been going around in English classes at high school. And just some of the reactions that have sprung up have also surprised me as well and just kind of disappoints me as it really shows how like that, that mission statement is kind of like just putting things in other people's mouths when they, they might not, they might not even, when they're part of the problem. And they're not following that among everyone. It's like you can't, you can't put words over a large group of people who may not be all following the same thing. And problems there. So with me, I've heard rumors saying like, negative rumors about like me doing, me reciting my poem and just people not getting the real message behind what I wrote that for. And as well as getting up in front of my, my own English class and talking to the class about my thoughts behind it and connecting it with the book we were reading, The Hate U Given, class. After I sat down, a kid tried to come up behind me and just kind of like mocked me behind my back or did some weird motion that I just didn't understand, but had other people laughing, which I didn't, I didn't know exactly what was going on. But that kind of behavior after like a serious conversation was just not acceptable for me. And it just kind of like opens my eyes to see how much some kids really just don't know the damage they can do with their words and their actions. And, and it shows that like there is limited representation. There is not a lot of, there's the, some of the education is not effective. And that's in, like that's the curriculum there. And there's like a lot of kids that, even when we went to the middle school, like we, we heard that like some kids thought that there was slavery going on in the 1900s. And it's just that kids grow up with that kind of, with that kind of lack of knowledge and that can be really dangerous for the world. And here at Burlington High School, we want to send off our students to succeed and ultimately live their best lives, of course. And if we're, and if we're lacking in that area of education, then we can't do that as a community. So, yes, thank you.
Christian, thank you so much. It takes a lot of resilience and courage to go on and...
Speak your truth. And so it is greatly appreciated for you doing that and speaking for yourself and speaking for your classmates. Continue to be the change that you want to see. So thank you for that. I want to ask Shafali to speak into the space about your experiences and, you know, what your hopes are for the work as we try to move forward. Shafali?
My name is Shafali Bakary and I'm a current sophomore at Burlington High School. I'm a part of the Diversity Equity Inclusion Group and the Advocacy Room. Both of these groups are geared towards making our school and community a better and more diverse place for all. But recently, our DEI group traveled to the middle school to talk to the eighth graders at the recent event where an African-American student was called the N-word. Hearing what the eighth graders said left me disappointed, enlightened, and shocked. In the groups, many students shared their stories where they felt uncomfortable at school, had no place to go, and felt that their boundaries were violated. Some students were not educated on the history of the N-word and slavery, like Christian said. Additionally, many students were not educated on disabilities and the LGBTQ plus community. Many students asked questions, and that is fine. But I feel like we should create more education towards these important topics in our schools. Only two years ago, I was in the middle school and these experiences were still occurring then. There has been no change thus. And in the Advocacy Room and in DEI, we have proposed different solutions to create a more diverse community where everyone is respected. Some of our solutions are hiring more POC guidance counselors to deal with these specific issues, hiring more POC teachers, having more talks while current events, even if they're uncomfortable, it's very important we talk about them. Adding slavery, Asian, African, and LGBTQ plus history in the classrooms and so much more. As a student who has grown up in the Burlington Public Schools my entire life, I see where we can make change and I would love to be part of making a positive change in our schools and in our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Shafali, again.
You've been a great leader with the group this year. And Mr. Larkin and I are grateful to be able to learn with you and from you. So we appreciate your, your leadership and your resilience as well. Thank you for speaking your truth into the space. I'd like to ask Ava, if you're still here, if you could give your insights and thoughts. That would be wonderful. Hey, Ava?
Hello, so I'm Ava Brim. I am a current junior here at BHS. And as Christian and Shafali have been saying... And as Christian and Shafali have been saying, we have all kind of voiced these. Issues of concern and what change we want to see in. The, not only the high school, but the elementary schools and the middle schools and hopefully the future. And as Shafali was mentioning, the idea of. Teaching kids about LGBTQ history and disability history is extremely important. And not only to students, but to teachers as well. As someone with. Givone Syndrome epilepsy, which is a extremely rare type of epilepsy, most teachers don't. Don't know how to help me or they want to help, but they don't understand enough. And I'm not saying they have to go out there and research and find the perfect diagnosis for me. I can't answer that question either. With just some education about like what it is and who it affects and how you can help them. That is a really important thing for students to have in my mind. I have personally experienced. One instance with a teacher in elementary school telling me to stop having a seizure, which is. Something I cannot control and it is above my control and. Overall, I'm kind of rambling, but overall, I enjoy going to the DEI advisory. Every time we have a meeting, I look forward to talking about all these different problems with Mr. Porch and Mr. Larkin. And some of the students on this call. Thank you.
Um, thank you, Ava. Um.
And you know, your choice to share your own journey and what, what your. Personal challenge and circumstances is incredible. Um, I appreciate you to no end, you know that. And thank you for, for being here with us and again, um, bringing your voice uh to the table. Uh, Madam Chair, we have one more student and her name is Kezza. Um, Kezza, if you're still here, I would love uh to. Hear from you and what your experiences are and what your hopes are for the future as we try to continue to do this work.
Hello, can you hear me?
I'll do a voice, Kezza. I'll do a voice.
Um, okay, so um, um, I'm just gonna talk about my experience first with the, the middle school. It was very eye-opening, like when we went there to see like how um, like what the kids um. Have been thinking about like these type of topics because you think that um. That just because they're young, like they don't need to start talking about this, but when we talk to them, we can see that they're very like. Not all of them, but you know, uh, like not enough of them are educated enough on um, like important things. And like just, for example, some of them really thought that like slavery was in the nineteen hundreds, which is very concerning and alarming. And um, they're going into their eighth grade and they're going into high school, which is like. Like as young as they may be, like they're going to be our future as well, so they also need to be like educated like properly. And um, yeah, so it was just very eye-opening to see like what they're thinking about because. As much as you would think like growing up and going to high school, things would be different. They're not, like I see a lot of similarities in the high school. Which is why it's important that we, we start from the middle school and we also continue to have these discussions is very important. And uh meaningful discussions uh as much as they're uncomfortable to have sometimes, but. They're very necessary and I would think that um, I would think that um. Um, another thing that I want to say is at the school, I noticed. Like since I've been going here since ninth grade, I noticed how segregated the lunches are, which is very strange to me. And I'm not the only one who has noticed this, other people here in DI and my sister who's been going uh here since twenty sixteen. And has graduated twenty twenty, she, the, all four years of high school, she has also noticed. That the school lunches are segregated, which is strange and something that needs to be talked about and um. And I'm also in the high school that, I mean, in the middle school, the kids like, like. The ones, there were either people who didn't talk that much, which is fine and you know, maybe have taken, taken something by listening. But there was also some people who would um, who were just very ignorant and was like not aware of like why we're. Why we were here, why we're talking about the N-word and why, why it's important to. Not say the N-word if you're not black and like just, they were like, some of them, like some of the groups. I wasn't in it, but like some of the groups that uh my other DI members were in, they had some, like some strong reactions. When they went there, which is also concerning. Um, yeah, so that's just some of my thoughts. On everything. Yeah.
So Kezza, thank you so much and you did a better job. You, you know, you got, you got.
Um, again, um, your, your leadership has been great. Um, the fact that you connect with your, your peers and. You connected with middle schoolers and got them to kind of open up and, and talk is again, um, something that we got to continue to work on. And hopefully hearing from you, from you all tonight, um, helps folks understand the need for this work moving forward. Um, so thank you, all four of you for being here tonight and I'm glad we were able to get you all on a little early so we could, we could, we could cut you loose a little bit earlier, but um. Thanks again and uh we appreciate your, your efforts. Mr. Larkin?
Yeah, again, I want to thank the DEI students for making time tonight and uh it's been certainly a privilege and I learned a lot. From our meetings this year. Um, so I, I appreciate you all. And I also, I just want to highlight one, one other thing before we move on in the agenda that they mentioned the advocacy room. So that may be a new term for some people. Um, it's a new club at the high school this year. And it's um an affinity group and people get concerned when they hear affinity, but it's an affinity group around students. Who have an interest in advocating for school or community change. Um, so they're students that all share that passion. And the three areas that they're gonna um be talking about to Mr. Sullivan down the road, the three themes they came up with were um. This is again, student voice. Um, we'd like to talk a lot as the adults of what we think the experience is, but when we hear from the students, we get a. Um, a better insight into what the actual experience is. So the advocacy room for um the three, the three priority areas are curriculum. Change, school culture and community building, and classroom culture and norms are the three areas that the students highlighted. So they'll be. Talking to Mr. Sullivan down the road about um some of their ideas to advocate for change in those, in those three areas.
Thank you. Sure.
Um, I just wanted to say thank you again to the students who are advocating and, and sharing their experiences tonight. It's. Hard to hear some of these things and. I think that it's very, even though it is hard, it's important to, to hear these experiences and. Um, have them share what they're going through with the committee um in order to. Continue with the work and, and it's the only way that, that change will be made and so um I, I appreciate it and, and thank you again.
Took my words. Um, that's okay. Uh, again, I just would like to thank Christian, uh, Shafali and Ava and Kezza. I know it was not. Easy to always share um and be open, um, and especially in front of adults. So uh, and, and especially adults you haven't met before. So again, greatly appreciate uh you all sharing your experiences and. Um, I, I agree. Um, it's always tough to hear things um sometimes, but uh it needs to be said. So um, we'll go ahead and move on to.
I just, uh, sorry, there's one more hand up um from Ethan. So sorry, Ethan.
Just through the chair, I just want to give a little bit of context to what they referred to at the middle school. So for folks who didn't know, um. The, the district is gonna be, we, we're piloting what is called restorative justice practices. And uh the reason we're piloting it is because we want to implement it next year. As a way to, you know, think about unexpected behavior through the lens of learning opportunity. Um, research shows that when discipline is handled in a restorative practices way, what happens is young people have an opportunity to learn from. The unexpected behaviors and you know, more corporal kind of discipline, not to say that these things don't. Have a necessity in some spaces around certain things. Um, research also shows that, that leads to oftentimes folks learning. How to not get caught. And these kinds of um distinctions are detrimental to a community as a whole. Um, so the, the, the restorative justice circles that these young people led at the middle school. Uh, was, was structured and very organized. Um, there were circles, there were talking pieces. There was norms to these conversations and um. You know, the, the eighth grade students could pass, didn't have to participate um in the conversation, could simply pass the talking piece. Um, but, but the insights that the eighth graders were willing to share with the high schools students was substantial. And uh to your point, Madam Chair, oftentimes, young people are willing to talk to other young people. These particular high school students went in with um. Some framing and some existing knowledge of some of the challenges that were happening. Um, and they went in, in. You know, with a, a, a particular kind of lens. So for folks who didn't understand, um, when they were referring to the high, to the middle school visit. This is what they went to do. Um, there was a full feedback session with the, the middle school principal where these ten. Young people sat with Ms. Purchase and shared their thoughts, what their experiences were, what came out of that, that, that. You know, the day spent there and uh where Principal Purchase spent time with me and Mr. Larkin. And she shared kind of what she gleaned from talking to our eighth grade students. So this was a comprehensive process, wasn't um. Um, you know, a situation where it was not well thought out and, and well executed. Uh, they're just giving you kind of an overview of what the experience was for context. I just wanted you to hear that.
Thank you.
Oh, and I didn't realize we had Ethan here as well, so Ethan, um, why don't you go ahead and unmute yourself?
Can you hear me?
I can. Sorry, we missed you earlier.
Okay, I'm Ethan John, I'm a sophomore at the high school. So to go back to what everyone else was saying. To go back to what everyone else was saying about the experience at the middle school, it was shocking for me also. Going back to some students thinking that slavery started in the nineteen hundreds and you can tell that some of the students that were black, when they were. Speaking in the space, they kind of felt uncomfortable and even some students would come to us after to speak to us because. You can say that you're in a safe place, speaking from experience. You could say you're in a safe place. But as a student, you will know that you're not in a safe place. So you could tell that certain students felt more comfortable speaking. To us privately when certain classmates were around and even certain classmates were kind of. Trying to find ways to justify the mistakes of their classmates that were saying racial slurs or doing other racist things. And this happens a lot, like this does not differ from the high school. There's certainly a lot of experiences in the high school that are like that. So I've, I even told some students that like. In the high school, you can go through similar experiences where students will do stuff that are very racist or to you and. Like sometimes you'll get in trouble, even though you're not the person that did anything and then the school doesn't really take it seriously like. The kids that are racist to you don't really get in trouble. Even in the middle school, we were talking about. There should be difference in discipline for matters like this because these matters may be taken more seriously. And this also ties me into that I, certain staff do not take stuff like this seriously either. Even in the high school, when, going back to Christian's um poem for Black History Month and we had this whole thing in English class for. Black History Month where we had a presentation in the beginning of our class, some teachers were saying stuff like, oh, let's just get this over with. And like they didn't take it seriously. They thought of it as kind of a chore, which you can also see this as like how they put. They put books about black people in the curriculum. When they do it, they'll put like a book about us being like. Beaten and enslaved and, and then they'll say it's a job well done because we put a book about black people. It's kind of seen as a chore instead of something that everyone should learn from, which is how it should be seen. Even certain. Staff members have a bad attitude to even issues about this. Even during, last year, we had, I was virtual last year and there was. Around the time, we had like a Black Lives Matter thing going on in some of our classes and some teachers were not, and students. Were very vocal about their opinions about that and. It's like a very uncomfortable experience for some people because it's like for people like me, a black person. This is like a life or death situation and stuff we have to deal with every day, but some other people see it as a source of like entertainment or. They want to play devil's advocate and try to dis, find any way to disagree with you. And also even. Certain staff members are using like slurs in their curriculum, which like. In Family Consumer Science, which has nothing to do with that, which is kind of interesting. And also even some stu-, even certain staff members in the high school were saying that um. They don't have to try and be diverse, like diversity doesn't really matter. Oh, they don't have to try for their students of color. They said stuff quote unquote like we have, we as in black students have Mr., have Mr. Porch already, so what else do we need? And this brings me to a point that it is not the black students or the black staff's job to educate everybody. And have to be in charge of making everyone know that we matter and that our rights matter. It's everybody's job to know that. We shouldn't have to be the ones to spoon feed people. If people actually, people should care because. It's a life or death situation for us, not just black people, other people of color too. So it shouldn't be on us to have to do all the work. Anyway, that's all I had to say for today. Thank you.
Again, Ethan, thank you so much.
I appreciate your, your, your voice and um your, your, your commitment to. Being a part of some positive change, but also your courage to name the things that have been your experience. It's not an easy thing to do. Um, again, I, I'm grateful to all of our students who show up and have the courage to do as much, so thanks.
Thank you, Ethan. Um, I'm going to go ahead and move on to the Marshall Simon Student Parent Handbook, second reading.
I'm gonna ask if we can go out of order because I know we have some people here.
What do you want to do?
If we could go, I think, most of the folks here for item F.
Oh, okay, yes.
So I was gonna ask Mr. Sullivan and Mrs. Dacey to come up?
Thank you, Mr. Larkin, Mr. Porch, Madam Chair. Um, very happy to be here with Mrs. Dacey, our World Language Chair at the high school. Um, her and her colleagues in two thousand eighteen, two thousand eighteen. Uh, proposed Burlington High School being part of a SEAL of Bili literacy program. Um, Renee's gonna talk a little bit about it, but it has been a point of pride for us the last several years. Uh, a lot of our students have, have benefited. Uh, from the distinction that they get uh throughout the process. So I just want to thank Renee and her colleagues. Uh, they're always at the cutting edge of. Uh, curriculum and instruction. Uh, you heard some of our Italian students talking earlier. Um, I think all the students here would echo. Uh, their experiences within the department. Um, that they really have great experiences and exposure to a variety of. Um, curricular activities, um, extra, few trips, the Spanish exchange, the Italian exchange program. Um, in the SEAL of Bili literacy is an additional uh point of pride for them. So Mrs. Dacey, thank you.
Thank you, Mark. So Principal Sullivan and I are joined this evening um with a few of BHS's rock stars who are in the audience right now. That have earned the SEAL of Bili literacy award this year. And for those of you who are unfamiliar with the SEAL of Bili literacy, be assured. That it is quite the accomplishment in Massachusetts, Massachusetts and beyond. So as described on their website, the state SEAL of Bili literacy. Is an award provided by state-approved districts that recognizes high school graduates who attain high functional. And academic levels of proficiency in English and a world language and recognition of having studied and attained proficiency. In two or more languages by high school graduation. The vision is to help students recognize the value of their academic success. And to see the tangible benefits of being bilingual. The state SEAL of Bili literacy takes the form of a seal that appears on the diploma. Of the graduating senior and is a statement of accomplishment for future employers and for college admissions. Now I'd like to present the following students who received the SEAL of Bili literacy award this year. When I call your name, please stand and remain standing until I finished calling all the names, at which time we will congratulate, congratulate you with a. A round of applause. Madison Bowden, Spanish. Madison Bowden, Spanish. Sean Gallagher, Spanish. Navey Garg, Hindi. Miriam Amina, Spanish. Courtney Magnarelli, Spanish. Harrison Perez Armaz, Spanish. Thomas Ryan, Spanish. Anna, Anna, excuse me, Anna Carolina Silva, Portuguese. Josie Tolan, Spanish. Casper McKinnage, Latin. McInage, excuse me, McInage, Latin. Quinn Matson, Spanish. Juan Pacheco Sembrano, Spanish. Joining these two students are two more students who received the Seal of Bilinguality with Distinction Award due to their high scores on both exams. William Hatch, Latin. And Armin Manucharian, Armenian. Congratulations. The World Languages Department joins the rest of the BPS community in congratulating these students for their outstanding accomplishments. Please know that your efforts in language learning success make such a positive impact on the Burlington community. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you all. What a nice, that's a great accomplishment.
Incredible.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And any other comments or anyone else want to say anything? Nope, all right. So let's go ahead and anything else you want to take out of order or we're gonna?
Yeah, if you don't mind.
Sure.
I know Mr. Sullivan's here and he's under the weather as well, so let him get out of, get the handbook first reading out of the way.
Oh, the BHS, yeah.
BHS, yes, thank you.
Item C. Thank you all. Should we get in the picture with them?
Bob, I think the school committee members are going to jump in.
We're going to hide behind you guys. So you guys are so much.
We know it'll be. We'll see though. Yeah.
I'm respectful for what they said. I hope he's okay with it. I mean, it's not.
It's not genuine. Why would you?
I just would. And they are articulate. Thank you so much. They were very articulate and I appreciate it. They're respectful. I think so too.
Okay, sure.
Nice job, congrats. Thank you, Renee.
Thank you.
Bye, Renee.
All right. So, the BHS Student Handbook first reading.
Nobody wanted to stay for the handbook? I know it's exciting stuff. Yeah, so we submit the handbook as a draft every year. Obviously, everyone has been provided a copy. Majority of the changes are minor in nature, dates, phone numbers, things like that. Some of the links haven't been updated yet, which you won't see live, the rotation schedule, student government obviously has just been, the elections are happening, so the Google Doc is a live document, so the changes happen in real time when some of that information is updated. But just some of the changes that are in here that you might have noticed, they were highlighted in yellow, but on page seventeen, Mr. Porch, Mr. Larkin, Dr. Conti, myself, and Mr. Hart, our athletic director, have started before every athletic season, meeting with all coaches and athletes participating to talk about a variety of things, but the general essence of it is competing with character and our expectations for student athletes that are representing the community of Burlington in the ranks, on the playing fields, in the pools, wherever it is that they're playing. And that is really just to set our expectations that we don't tolerate hazing, bullying, harassment of any kind. So that on page seventeen is put into writing for folks to see under athletic policies. We are looking to potentially add some video cameras at the high school if that does happen. There's some language on page forty-two that would just notify folks that they are there and what we use them for, just to be clear about why we would install them. On page forty-seven, we did update the marijuana policies to be in line with current Massachusetts laws and regulations. We also softened the suspension language for up to a certain amount of days, not an automatic amount of days, and I feel that gives us more flexibility to work in the best interest of students if they do find themselves in unfortunate situations. And we didn't feel like marijuana should continue to be treated like an illicit drug, like some other controlled substances, and that it was more in line with alcohol use at the high school. There are some mass general laws in there that still outline marijuana, which we couldn't change because there are obviously mass general laws, which I can't rewrite, but, so you'll still see that in there, but that doesn't impact our local policy control to deal with situations that arise with that. And that's pretty much it for the major changes that have happened. Obviously, as Mr. Porch mentioned, when we established some restorative justice practices, which we're really looking forward to, I think they've been successful in other districts. While we do have certain elements that we implement from time to time, certainly a formal process is, we're really looking forward to that. Mr. Porch is spot on about the research, so I think that will be helpful. Obviously, that would be added to the handbook at that time.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. Anyone else have anything they want to add or any questions? All right, thank you. So, let's go back to the second reading of Marshall Simon's Student Parent Handbook. There are a few changes, I think, that were noted on a piece of paper, and I didn't know if you all wanted to go through those or?
I think Miss Purchase is online with us.
Is she? Okay. It's so hard to see, the name's up there, so. Miss Purchase?
Is not online.
Is she there? No? Did you want to go through them?
So I'm not prepared to go over them, so.
Okay. Again, it looks like there is a sheet that was provided to each of us with some of the revisions that they had made based on our last meeting. And if all of you, hopefully you had a chance to take a look at it, and we can probably bring it up at the next meeting and?
Again, Madam Chair, I think Mr. Sullivan framed this properly, is these documents are Google Docs, they're sort of living documents, and my suggestion would be just to adopt the handbook as it is, so we actually have a working handbook, and if there are edits that are needed.
Okay.
We can always make those as we go. So, again, I recommend the school committee vote to adopt the Marshall Simon's Middle School Student Parent Handbook for the 2022-2023 school year.
That sounds fine with me. So, anyone would like to make a motion to approve the second reading of the handbook as we have seen with the changes attached?
Oh, so moved.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I'm in favor, so three, zero, zero. All right. And next is the ELL review.
Yep, and our Director of ELL, Carrie Lamprey, is on the call, I can see her, so she's ready to go with this portion of the agenda.
Thank you.
Hi, thank you. Thank you all for sharing your time with me tonight. As Patrick said, I am our Director of English Learner Education, but I'm also here with one of our incredible parents in our district, Ms. Padmini Shriduran. And she will also be sharing with you, after I'm done, she will share with you a brief overview of our LPAC group. She'll explain more of that in a minute. So I'm going to have Bob share our slides. Thank you, Bob. Great, so. All right, so during the, during this school year, Burlington participated in the tiered focused monitoring review conducted by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education's Office of Language Acquisition. The purpose of this tiered focused monitoring review is to monitor compliance with the regulatory requirements focusing on English learner education. Districts are reviewed every six years through this tiered focused monitoring. And so, this was our year to have, to go through this audit process. So I'm going to explain a little bit about the results of this, but first, Bob, you can change the slide. I just wanted to share a little bit of our data. So, first, in terms of total population, this chart shows our EL numbers during our last audit six years ago. So, in 2015, 2016, we had a total of 105 English learner students. And now, in school year 21, 22, we are up to 261 students total, pre-K through 12. So as you can see, we clearly have had some significant growth. So, next, Bob. In addition to the population growth, we have also seen a change in demographics. This chart shows the countries of origin of our current EL, or English learner students. Aside from students who were born in the United States, our most common country of origin now is Guatemala. This year, we're also seeing an increase in families from Brazil. Next. The second chart shows the distribution of primary languages spoken by our English learner students. Corresponding to the top countries of origin, Spanish is our top language, followed by Portuguese. Next. Another. Number of students who are referred to as newcomer English learners or students in their first year of school in the United States. Out of our total English learner population, we have 66 students who are newly arrived and are in need of additional support to ensure their success throughout school. Next. Related to this data is another subset of students who are identified through a screening process. This group of students are referred to as SLICE, or Students with Limited or Interrupted Formal Education. SLICE students often possess a variety of school readiness skills. They have a lot of content knowledge and academic ways of thinking, but they're different from students who have consistently attended Massachusetts schools. Limited schooling, however, the students have, bring a wealth of experience, but their limited schooling and associated implications for teaching often pose more complex and variant challenges than those typically encountered among other English learners. So they are a real specific subset of students. It's important and required that we identify students who are SLICE in order to provide the specialized instruction necessary to ensure their success. We currently have 23 students who we consider SLICE and are working on creating plans and establishing specialized support to build upon their strengths and support their specific educational needs. Next, Bob. So, I want to thank all of the educators, pre-K through 12. Hard this year to ensure a positive educational experience for our diverse English learners. Our sheltered content instruction and our English as a second language teachers, as well as our administrators and support staff, have shared the responsibility of welcoming, supporting our English learner students and their families. Based on feedback from the conversations with these teachers, there were several highlights of our shared work with EL students. And when I say conversations, that was part of the audit process. So, there were interviews that were, that happened with teachers from both different perspectives. And so, this is some of the feedback that was shared to us from DACY. So, next, Bob. So, as shown in this first image, teachers want students to feel valued and respected, and that was something that was shared with us. Recently, two of our SLICE Spanish teachers, Ms. Daniela de Souza and Ms. Renee Daisy, who you just heard from, along with Counselor Gloria Waszazik, took some of our SLICE students from Burlington High School to explore career options based on their personal interests. Next. The second image, taken from a slide created for newcomer students at Marshall Simon's, reflects our strong sense of collaboration. In this instance, a grade six team of teachers worked together to develop supports for a newly arrived student from Brazil. Next. This final image shows an elementary ESL teacher co-teaching in a kindergarten classroom with a sheltered content teacher to provide both language and content development to all students. This not only demonstrates a strong sense of collaboration, but also the shared responsibility for all teachers to teach language. Next. And this final statement emerged as a theme from conversations with our educators and is reflective of their appreciation, actually go back one, Bob. And is reflective of their appreciation, any positive aspects of working with English learners. So it says, "If you're lucky to be in Burlington," that was one of the comments that we shared with. Now you can move on, Bob, thank you. The following DACY findings highlight areas for our continued growth and improvement in order to ensure all students are successful in our schools. Under the criteria for program placement and structure, we will need to focus on increasing our staffing, ensuring student growth, and monitoring student progress. Next. In order to address these areas, our proposed action plan includes, one, the creation of an English learner assessor position. This would be a new teaching position focused on ensuring compliance and effectiveness of the identification and ongoing assessment of our English learner students. Number two, we have already begun the process of creating success plans for students who have not demonstrated growth on their yearly proficiency assessments. During the upcoming school year, we will provide training for all teachers to access this information to support their daily instruction. Number three, while we have been piloting interim assessments in specific schools, we have identified a district-wide assessment to monitor student progress throughout the school year. And again, these were findings from the DACY audit that we are addressing. Next, Bob. The second and final focus area falls under licensure requirements. Although the district and the state have provided opportunities for teachers to take an SEI endorsement course at no cost, there are a few teachers who have not met this requirement in order to have an English learner student in their class. Next. Next. We will continue to provide reminders to teachers that this is a requirement at both the district and state level that will prevent them from being able to recertify. We will also work with principals to ensure English learner students are not placed in classrooms with teachers who do not hold this endorsement. So, before I turn this over to Patty to share about our LPAC, which you can see on the screen now, I just want to thank all of you for your time and support, and I want to echo the words of our teachers when they shared that they felt lucky to work in Burlington. As an educator focused on the needs of English learner students, I recognize that while we have a lot more work to do to meet the needs of all of our diverse students and families, we have taken significant strides this year in strengthening our relationships and creating a sense of shared responsibility for this work. So I want to thank you all for being such an important part of our team. And I'm going to turn it over now to Patty to share an overview of one of the also exciting aspects of this year, our Parent Advisory Council. So, thank you, Patty.
Hi, Carrie, and hello to everybody and team. Well, I am Padmini, in short Patty, and I am a parent of two kids at Fox Elementary. So as Carrie mentioned about the LPAC, what is this LPAC? It stands for English Language Parent Advisory Council. And the purpose of this council is to give advice to school authorities and Burlington families on topics that import to English learners. So it basically aims at bringing families of Burlington town and Burlington public schools together. So, who do we have in this council? We do have families of the current English learners as a part of the council, and we also do welcome families of. also do welcome families of former English learners as well to join in and become a part of this council. And who attends this? In fact, throughout the current year since September, we have had over four to five meetings, LPAC meetings, and from an initial small group of families. The LPAC is seeing an increased participation of families, and now we have, we have over 20 to 30 families per session, all from different backgrounds representing over, over 10 languages. So to make sure that all these families could actively participate in each session, we do have a live stream interpreter, interpreter system to avoid any, any language barriers. And now what have we done so far in these sessions? So during these sessions, we share information about our schools by inviting a few members from the school and the community. And our topics are mostly based on the family feedbacks to help them learn more about the education system. And this also, and we also, during each session, we also give families an opportunity to voice their suggestions and opinions, so it helps us improve our programs more. So now as we head towards the end of the current year, we have one final meeting on June 13th. So on this day, we will have the Equity Audit Team visit us to hear more from our families about their experiences. And we will also be reviewing our work for the next year. So as we are seeing an increased family participation in the LPAC, we definitely appreciate the support of the district and to all the people who worked in to make this council grow. And yes, special appreciation and thank you to some of the peoples here in this meeting tonight, Mr. Larkin, Mr. Porch, Mr. Kuniyama, Ms. Simon. And yes, last but not the least, Dr. Conti too, who have joined us in at our meetings. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Really appreciate everything that you explained to us about your group. I'm very excited that there are 20 to 30 families per session. That's awesome. Again, anyone else have any questions or any comments?
I just had a question about the distribution of the 260 students. Are they pretty evenly distributed among the grades or is it high school, elementary?
Yeah, so we are largely.
Can you, can you start over? I think we lost you for a sec.
Oh, sorry. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
As I was going to say that our largest population now is at our high school, which is, we're within about 57 students at our high school. It continues to vary. We have students coming and going all the time, but we're in the 50 for the high school. And then it's semi evenly distributed among our elementary schools and then followed by our Marshall Simons.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Maybe hoarsely whisper some questions. Ms. Lamprey, thank you very much for the presentation and the information. Some of the action plans that you put in place in response to the findings from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. One is that you're understaffed and you need an additional position. Now is that a new position or is that a reallocation of an existing position?
That would be a new position. In order to be able to meet that need of adequate staffing.
And is. Okay, and is that, that is something that we have to report back to the Department of Ed on that, that we are moving in that, moving in that direction? So again, that should get the committee's interest right there if we need to, we need to move forward or find the additional position. Is the expectation from the department that that would be a position for the fall?
Correct. As part of our review, we're required to create an action plan and then we will have check-ins.
Throughout the year.
To ensure that we are not in need that would surprise.
And again, the other step was to ensure that our EL students are being taught by teachers who have the SEI endorsement as part of their license, is that correct?
Correct.
And those were the two major findings of the, of the report.
Yeah.
And then again, district action is required in the short term Patrick, I'm sorry, I'm trying to, I'm not answering.
No, I just, no, so the two sightings were, I believe sighting number one was inadequate staffing and sighting number two was the lack of an SE endorsement, SEI endorsement for four teachers when they did a review of classes. So the action plan that Carrie, Ms. Lamprey has created is, one of the action plans for the, is to get the English learner assessor position which will help us alleviate some of the issues that came up. And Carrie, please jump in if I'm wrong. Then some success plan training, like we need to have success planned for students that aren't showing the growth that they're supposed to be showing. And finally, district-wide interim assessments because we want to do a better job of monitoring the progress throughout the year. And I know Ms. Lamprey does this well, but we want to again, have this be systemic, not just happening in pockets. And that's where some of the training will come in. So Carrie, please just correct or add on if I missed anything.
Beautifully, thank you. That's really what it is. And again, the assessor position is really because why we do have a good number of staff across the district that are working directly with students, one of the challenges is that our teachers do not have the time built into their schedules to be able to assess, do all of the assessments that are required now with a lot of states regulations. For example, the SLICE screening that I mentioned is something that came up more recently and now is required. And that requires another set of assessment measures that come into play as well as all of the record keeping and documentation that's required by the state now. So that would be, that would alleviate the teachers of that responsibility and allow us to make sure that we had more equitable approach across the district to the screening for students.
Thank you, Ms. Lamprey. I admire your suggestion because this is a position.
That's not in the budget is, what I would like for you to do is if the school committee could take a motion to support adding this EL position so that we can be in compliance with the state and then just, I'll ask me to figure out how to fit it in. And then I can always report at a later time how we did fit it in. But I wish if, again, if some of you are all comfortable making that motion, it seems like the state is part of our corrective action for this EL compliance is that we have to add a, a staff position.
Would anyone like to make a motion as Dr. Conti stated, to add a position? And he would need to find a way to create that position.
I move to support the addition of an EL assessor position. Do I need to say more?
Mr. Frost, if you could just say an EL position, I just.
An EL position.
Just be, I just like some flexibility.
Absolutely.
But we're giving Ms. Lamprey the most flexibility. It sounds like that's what we're going to do, but that would be great. Thank you.
I move that we support the addition of an EL position for this coming school year as however can be fit in.
Thank you.
Second.
Alright, I need additional discussion? Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
I'm in favor and all opposed? Okay, 300.
And again, Ms. Lamprey, the second finding is more of a training, doesn't really have a budgetary impact, is that? I just want to make sure that you don't need any additional votes from the committee this evening for your action plan.
No, thank you. Thank you all.
Thank you Madam Chair.
Thank you.
And again, please. This, having two findings is, is significant and reflects an incredible amount of hard work. So I know that we oftentimes highlight the deficits, but only having two deficits in this, go ahead Patrick.
No, you're doing fine. But I just want to reiterate that we had more findings when we had 100 kids and that was when Ms. Lamprey wasn't in charge of the department. So I think it's, given the growth when you look at the numbers from 105 to 261, to have only two findings with that kind of growth and change, like the support of staff and the adaptive work that needs, that is involved and ongoing is a credit to, to her work as director. So I want to thank her.
Yes, thank you. Anyone else have any other comments?
Thank you for the update Carrie and Patty, also for the LPAC update. Appreciate it.
Okay. Alright, thank you very much. So next on the agenda is equity and we'll go ahead, Mr. Larkin and Mr. Porch.
We'll kind of tag team this one. I know we have the unified basketball team. I'm sorry I don't have the act, the record, but I did, I stopped by yesterday afternoon and they were playing Melrose here. And we were in a, like a back and forth game and then in the fourth quarter, a couple of our students started hitting three pointers. They hit better than the Celtics did last night. And even though, and both teams won Celtics and Red Devils. So it was, it was just fun to watch, same thing. If you haven't been to a game, I mean, I don't know if you have any more opportunities, but it's, it's just fun to watch the students. They're, they're so excited, just the joy and it's just, it's fun. It's, it was a highlight of my day, so I encourage you to check it out if you haven't checked out a unified game.
Thank you, thank you very much.
We talked already about, earlier in the agenda, about the restorative justice circles. The only other thing I'd highlight there is that this year was more piloting. As part of that pilot, I met with all of our school leaders across this district in a one-on-one kind of situation to give them, you know, information on restorative justice practice and really walked them through some of what the research said and then set up information sessions with Suffolk who does this work. Suffolk University does this work across the Commonwealth. So the next phase of this process includes Suffolk working with school leaders and their school staff people in terms of just providing more information. And then our next phase of the process includes training folks. So what we will do is we will build a plan for, for folks to train and we're going to use the train to train model and have some, some folks who champion the work. And then, you know, we'll have a gradual rollout process. The other nice benefit to restorative justice is that implementation can be scaffolded and differentiated depending on your district's needs in terms of timing. What was critical for us was for, to have, you know, all of our school leaders buy in and then for them to promote it with their staff people to buy in. And we got that, which I thought was terrific. And then, and now it's just the implementation processes that, that's going to, you know, be, be coming. I also would say that it's likely that the, the audit, the equity audit results will highlight the need for this and we're already, we already started talking about the value that it had separate from whatever the outcome says. So very proactive approach on our part as a district. Let's Talk About It was, our last session was last week and Mr. Larkin did an outstanding job facilitating the session where we really just kind of summarized the previous sessions and, and used a wonderful protocol called Connections where folks got to really kind of chime into the space and share what they learned after the highlighting of each session, which was really nice. We got some feedback and, and some great takeaways for, for moving forward as we continue with it, you know, starting up again in the fall. So yeah.
Thank you, that was, yeah, it was great. I loved the Let's Talk About It and I know the numbers dwindled, but I know spring's the time when people have a lot going on, but it was, I learned a lot just being able to interact with people and have the discussion. So I am going back and forth with Ms. Chickolini here, just, and she's, she's enlightening me on some details, so I want to thank her for that. But the, the basketball team is five and one and I knew this, but I forgot that Hoopapalooza is Wednesday tomorrow in Wakefield at 3:30. So if people have a chance to go out and watch our team play in Hoopapalooza, that would be awesome. And I think we're also on to Special Olympics. It was great to have that activity back. I think it's been a couple of years since we've been at Wilmington High School and it was wonderful. Again, thanks to the Burlington Police for helping escort our athletes to the, to Wilmington High School for the, to the track. And so they had a police escort and exciting and had all their fans kind of as they got off the buses cheering for them and escorting them into the stadium there. And they walked around the track and got introduced and the superintendent from Wilmington said a few words, Dr. Conti said a few words. And it's really, and Mr. Porch and I got a chance to take a ride over and it's just so much fun to, again, to see the kids so excited. And it was exciting for us to be back after a two-year hiatus. So I think we had about 100 kids, almost 100 kids participate between that. And we also had the Lab Special Olympics, which were back and those happened in Lexington last week, I think it was. And they, again, a great day if you have a chance to, again, check out either of those in the future. Definitely a fun day. I've had the good fortune to be able to go to both over the years. And I, I want to mention the clinic, but I don't know if you have anything to add on Special Olympics before we move on to the thriving.
Just, sorry, before I squeak out something, the, the Hoopapalooza tomorrow, I just want to mention that in order to get the team there on time, we're borrowing two vans from Lab because we can't get our buses back to get the team there. So I know Town Meeting recently approved having two 14-passenger vans for us to utilize. We plan on utilizing them throughout the day, but I just, a thank you to Town Meeting and a concrete example to the committee as to why we need the vans would be an activity such as the, getting our unified basketball team to, to their, to their event. So again, thank you to the committee for supporting that and for Town Meeting for supporting that more.
And again, one other thank you for the Special Olympics is of course the teachers who put in a lot of work to be out there all day with their students. And I know they have a great time too, but it's a different day for them. So I appreciate their work in making that, you know, success this year. So the last thing, I know we talked about our collaborative health clinic with Woburn that we've been doing for low-income families that need support with either physicals and we're moving towards vaccinations. But this was another physical clinic we had last night and we had 20 families from Woburn and Burlington who were able to get their students' physicals. So they meet the Mass Department of Public Health requirements in regards to, you know, having students have physicals to be able to attend school. Again, I know we mentioned it last time, Dr. Altman from Arlington is a key person who is able to bring out, I think we had 10 student, students from Tufts Medical School last night helping us out. And once again, it seemed a lot easier last night, the second time through. We had like clockwork stations and move them in, move them in and move them out. And I just want to highlight again, from my office, Rosemary de Souza, incredible, like pulling it all together, makes it so easy. And then Adriana is the homeschool liaison in Woburn. And I'm not saying this to add pressure, but we did have two Woburn School Committee members last night that are helping out. One actually drove a van to, that helped bring some Woburn families. And the other ones are, is like a nurse, so she was able to help in a way that you may not be able to support us. But, so, but we had to, so next year, we'll, we'll make sure you have the dates ahead of time. If you're able to just come in and it's, it's a, it's a great night, it's a great night. No, so I'm saying this after the fact, so I'm acknowledging that. But again, the collaboration, both of those school committee members just were happy to, to see Woburn and Burlington working so well together. And I know we talked about the Battle of Wind Street, but last night it was the collaboration of Wind Street, so it was great. And I want to mention, I know Mr. Coona helps a lot with our facilities, our overseas facilities and the custodians at Marshall Simons last night, again, were coming in and screwing up their routine, their nightly routine. And all they were like, get out of here, we'll fix it, we'll put it back, like, so they couldn't have been better in regards to helping us out. And again, thanks to Ms. Purchase and the teachers over there, because I'm sure there were a few things out of place, we did our best. But just, people can be territorial sometimes about their spaces and everybody's just been so welcoming and it's, it's been, again, another, I want to, another highlight, I think for, again, the district that we're able to do this work together and, and get families some medical, medical services that they wouldn't have access to, so. We mentioned, yeah, Senator Friedman again, it was her, her efforts at the State House that was able to get this allocation of $300,000 for Burlington and Woburn to use, you know, towards the. allocation of $300,000 for Burlington and Woburn to use, you know, towards this goal of supporting low-income families who need health services. So.
Yeah. Thank you so much for that update. And yes, if we get dates in advance, we might be able to volunteer. And Mr. Frost, it looks like you had your hand up.
Just a quick question. Were these students not able to attend until they had the physicals and the immunizations?
Again, I don't want to, I don't want to publicly say that we don't, like, go right by, like, every detail of the law or the regulations, but we try to make sure that if, if families are making efforts to get their students what they need, we usually, our MO in Burlington is they attend school. If there's, we've given opportunities and provided resources, and they're still not, you know, taking care of what needs to be taken care of, it might be different. But in our, from our work, I mean, I'll speak for Dr. Conti, when we work with our families and tell them what we need and ask questions about why they're not able to get what they need, usually, you know, there's no parent out there that doesn't want to get their student the medical, the medical support they need. So, so we are keeping kids attending school, so I appreciate the question. And I know from talking to some other places, other districts, I'm not going to speak about anybody in particular, that it's not always the case. And sometimes you just, you don't, you don't get to know the families a little bit more in depth and find out why they're not able to get it. Like, because like I said, I always start with the assumption that a parent wants to get their kids the medical support they need. And I haven't been proven wrong on that yet. So, but thanks for the question.
Thank you, and your effort and everyone else's effort to get it done. Really, really impressive.
And Mr. Frost, there is a window, the CDC does provide us a window, and we are trying to operate within, within that window, and the Board of Health has helped us, and-
They've been great.
And so we're-
Chris Pollak from the, the nurse from the Board of Health has been so flexible, changing the, her schedule to accommodate families as well for vaccines. So I'm glad, thanks for following up.
Good to hear. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. We'll move on to thriving, and the first item is COVID update.
Thank you. Let me go back. I wrote down the update here. I'm losing track, week to week. So last week, we did have 102 reported cases. I'll say reported because, again, it's to the best of our knowledge and what gets reported by students, families or staff. The week before, it was 106. Today, it looks like we're right on track, like on Tuesday, 35 cases. So we're going to be, it looks like if that maintains the next couple of days, for the rest of the week, we'll be around 100 again. So I do, I do acknowledge that we had a parent that asked us to look at common sense mitigation, and I'll do more research on the details of that. But I've also had some emails from, from another family asking about, you know, again, immune compromised family members, and if we could do more on the district end, like, the, I think the families feel like we've gone from a very restrictive policy. And I know we were, like, again, the history is we were following the state mandates. And then we had a big wane in the spread of COVID, and I think every district in the state pretty much removed their mask mandates. And I, what I'm hearing from families is that are asking for more masking, depending on the context of the classroom, is they feel like we've thrown our hands up and we're just, you know, we're done with it, and we're not really doing anything. So that's the feedback I'm getting. I'm also getting feedback, as I mentioned, I think previously, from some people that don't even want to hear the word mask. So that's where we're at. And I'm just letting you know the information. I don't have a, again, a judgment on what we should do, but those are how, you know, the two, I think, ends of the spectrum as far as families are feeling when it comes to masking and COVID. And I understand both, and I'm glad I don't have to decide what we're going to do from here.
Mr. Frost?
I'm just curious if you've had any conversations with the Board of Health, and if they are weighing in at all?
We've had a great, like, great communication with Susan Luminallo and the Board of Health. And I, again, this is just a factual statement, not a judgment. Our, our Board of Health is, hasn't mandated masks, like, in town, or they, they take the feedback. I know when we had our initial peak, we talked to Susan about, we're going to send a message that we're going to recommend masking, but it's still family choice, and she thought that was a good idea. So again, we are, the communication's great, and anytime I want to talk to her, she's available. So again, that's been consistent.
Thank you. You have a follow-up question?
Well, it's more of a logistical thought experiment, I suppose. As Ms. Cadillac recommended or suggested earlier in the meeting, if the district was going to have some kind of policy where if there is a positive case or two positive cases in a classroom that students in that particular classroom would wear for five days or 10 days, would this committee need to amend our policy that, I guess, institute a new policy that we had previously rescinded a few months, or was it eight weeks ago? 10 weeks ago?
I'm not, Madam Chair, I'm not sure you would need a new policy unless you are going to require any sort of mitigation of everybody. If you'd like a certain communication to happen, again, I'm not quite sure you need a policy, you can just discuss it. I think part of the challenge is the positive cases that we are hearing about are self-reported at this point, not coming through the Board of Health. And while there is undoubtedly some spread at school, it's, we don't control behaviors outside of school. So I think that there are still other things in place. And Patrick, you spoke to the principals today. You can talk to some of those.
Sure. We did. Again, we had our Tuesday admin team meeting today with all the building principals. And they said that they're going to, first of all, logistically, we don't really have the ability to do lunch outside. That's not something that we can do from a systemic standpoint in elementary buildings for, for a few different reasons. But they did say they're encouraging windows open on days like today where it's cooler. I know that causes, you know, some people who have allergies, other issues. They also said there, you know, if teachers want to take their classes outside, that's an option as well. We're not telling people they have to do, but we're saying, like, here's some good practices we can do now that the weather is what it is. So they're on board with that. They're talking to their teachers about it. And so that's where we're at. Again, I know, and we haven't seen it yet, that they said this was, they thought it was going to be like a two-week or so peak, and now we're in week three. So I'm hoping that we will start to see the decrease. But again, it's out of our hands at this point.
Do we already have air purifiers in the classrooms?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, those were, I just was making sure they were, I was assuming they're all still there, but Bob did that early on. All the classrooms have air purifiers.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you. So at this point, any more discussion on COVID and anything that I implement or not implement? We'll move on to the next item then. It's out-of-state travel to Canterbury Lake Park for our Marshall Simons Middle School. And what's recommended is that the school committee approve out-of-state travel to Canterbury Lake Park in Salem, New Hampshire on June 15, 2022, for the eighth grade field trip. And we're being asked to take a vote on that. Anyone want to make a motion?
I move that we approve out-of-state travel to Canterbury Lake Park on June 15. And as a side note, I will also be there with my own eighth grade students.
Uh, second?
Okay. Any discussion? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I'm in favor, 3-0-0. That was easy. All right. The next item is Facilities and Finance. And turn it over to Mr. Larkin, Mr. Porch, and I'm sure Mr. Kuna.
Yeah, we're just going to pass it. We're going to volley it that way to Mr. Kuna.
Yeah. Well, I have a couple of quick, short updates for each one of the subjects. But for the Fox Hill School Building Committee, some of you have received a WebEx meeting for next week, June 2, at 7:00 PM. It's going to be a WebEx meeting and in-person here in the school committee room at Burlington High School. We're working on the agenda, and the agenda will go out in the next one to two days, but definitely before the end of the week. And that'll have the full agenda notes on it. As in, we've had previous discussions, we will be looking to remove existing members, vote to add some new members, and then we need to discuss the timeline for the OPM, which is the Owner's Project Manager. So now that we are in the second phase, which is the feasibility study, one of the next tasks, tasks that the committee has is to put together an OPM bid, an RFP, and we have some templates to discuss and so forth at the next meeting. So it's going to be exciting. Everyone, please attend.
And I believe we have to elect a new chair as well, correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
Also on the agenda.
Perfect. All righty. The next is the update on the BHS.
Nothing existing new on the BHS as far as new work. I know on our previous meeting we discussed adding or creating a high school building committee. I believe I shared a template with members of the school committee previously. It's not on tonight's agenda, anything formal to vote on, but I believe we should have a discussion on how we choose to pick members, how many members we're looking to have, anything like that, and whether or not that should be scheduled for the next meeting or a future meeting.
Why don't we schedule that for the next meeting, because hopefully we'll have a full board?
Okay.
And then the next is the Safe Routes to School.
The next, yeah, is Safe Roots to School. So there are two things tonight that I will be asking the school committee to discuss and vote on. I do want to let everyone know that tomorrow we have Safe Roots to School during an observation at the middle school. And then next week, they will be there on Wednesday, again, following up on that observation. The two items to discuss tonight, of course, would be the possible amendment to the school committee wellness policy, and then the discussion that the parent survey is live right now on the website. And the message has been spread along to anyone administratively who is sending out messages to staff and students, and parents as well, too, to, if possible, add that link. So we hope the communication is getting out to parents. But again, parents, students, staff members, residents, they can go onto the Burlington website. On the homepage, there is a link to the Safe Roots to School survey. Survey's a two-week window, which started on Monday, and it closes next week on Friday. So maybe, again, if we can get that message out and let everyone know, Safe Roots to School survey on the Burlington Public School website closes next Friday. Thanks.
Thank you.
Oh, I guess we should talk about-
So did you want to talk about amending the school committee wellness policy?
Yes, please. I, I'm not sure, but I hope you all have had time to read the policy. Again, this is not a policy that I created. It's a policy that is passed on from Safe Roots to School, and it's subject to scrutiny through Mass DOT and Massachusetts Government wording. So basically, my point is, is that it is a requirement that we do adopt this, but again, we don't have the ability to change that. So again, if you all agree to that, then I would say let's support it. I do support it, but again, I need your help.
And we need to make a motion and approve it?
Yes, please.
Okay, just want to double check on that. Or anyone have any, want to make a motion to approve it, or anyone have any discussion before we do that?
I move that we adopt, update our school wellness policy to amend the act of transportation language from Safe Roots to School.
Second?
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? No discussion? I'm in favor, 3-0-0. All right. And the next item would be old business, if we have any school committee agenda backup materials. I think we were going to talk about the, you wanted to talk about the backup materials.
Again-
Being able to link, any other discussion on that, or?
Again, Mr. Frost, we're still working on it, so it's end of the year, but I understand what you want, and we are working towards providing the materials ahead of the meeting. So I, again, we're, we're working on it, and the meeting, these agendas are full. And so we're-
Yes, they are.
We will try to, try to get that done. And then a member had asked for a legal opinion on the fair share discussion. I did send that request to Darren Klein and have not heard back yet. My inclination is I believe that you can take whatever position you want, but I'm just waiting for his, his confirmation with that. Is there, I don't believe there's a deadline until November, so-
Yeah, no deadline. It's, I think it would actually be better if the full committee was here anyway.
Yeah.
So that, no problem. And thank you for the update on the backup material.
Yep. I was going to ask you about that as well, so thank you. So at this point, I think that was our last item. And if anyone would like to make a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? I'm in favor, 3-0-0.